Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We are delighted to have everyone this evening. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. There will be two opportunities this evening to address the board, the first being Agenda Item 6.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Item 7.1 through 11.3. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Ms. Saltman?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, up first this evening is the exciting part of the meeting, district highlights and recognition, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Bell.
Thank you, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Ms. Marshall. Our first recognition this evening will be the Auditor's Award that will be presented by the Auditor of State's office. And Ms. Marshall, was there something that you wanted to say in the introduction?
Yeah, so we have Mr. Scott Brown with us from the Auditor of State's office here to present us with the Auditor of State's Award. I think he has some remarks.
Thank you for allowing me to present the award this evening. It's my honor to be here on behalf of State Auditor Keith Faber to present the Westerville City School District with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. This award puts your district in a very select group. The Auditor of State's office audits approximately 6,000 entities per year, and less than 4% of them are eligible for this award. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meets these criterias to be considered a clean audit. The entity must file financial reports with the Auditor of State's office by statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. And the audit does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or questions costs. This award represents the hard work of all of the school's employees and financial staff who make every effort each day to attain accounting excellence. I want to recognize the board members and Superintendent John Kellogg that have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar. I specifically want to recognize Treasurer Nicole Marshall for her leadership, professionalism, and exceptional commitment to financial integrity. Congratulations, Nicole. On behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, I'd like to present this award to the Westerville City School District, the Auditor of State's Award with Distinction.
So I just want to say thank you to the board for your ongoing support of ensuring transparency and fiscal responsibility in our district. We absolutely could not do that without your direction and policymaking and all that. Thank you to the executive leadership team for their continued effort to make this possible as well. We look to their leadership throughout the district. We would not be successful with everyone in the organization. This award touches all aspects of the organization without everyone being diligent about understanding that we are responsible to our taxpayer with their tax dollars. And most importantly, I want to thank my outstanding team in the Treasurer's Office. I actually invited them here tonight, and I'd like for them all to come up to the front and be recognized. And I'd like to get a picture with the board if you guys wouldn't mind us stand up. So we have Assistant Treasurer Laura Hendricks, our Executive Assistant Meg Patton, Senior Payroll Coordinator Katharina Mead, Payroll Associate Christina Carney, Payroll Associate Megan Kelly, Payroll and Benefits Associate Missy Howlett, Benefits Coordinator Adama Ben Tomas, Fiscal Coordinator Leah Schlesse, Accounting Associate Gloria Stelter, and Accounting Associate Grace Lewis. So we all work behind the scenes a lot of the time, so they don't get to be seen and recognized that much, so I just want to make sure that we're thanking them for all of their hard work.
Our next recognition this evening will be a recognition of the 2023 Civitane Award, and at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Gertie Glass.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Ms. Marshall. I would like to introduce Mr. Atkins, President of the Westerville Area Civitane Club. Mr. Atkins will formally present Ms. Kirsten Drummond with the Westerville Area Civitane Club Special Education Professional Award for the 2023 school year. Ms. Donna DeTrey, in collaboration with the Civitane Club, established the Special Education Professional Award in 2018. This award specifically acknowledges those who support and work with students with disabilities in a variety of capacities. Since 2018, Westerville City Schools has had the honor and privilege to host teachers who have received this award.
Hello, thank you very much. She did most of my speech, so that makes it easy. So I won't go into the background, she did a very good job of that, as she always does, but I would like to announce, as the President of the Westerville Civitanes and as a representative of Civitane International, that we announced on April 21st at the Early Education Center that the recipient of our Special Education Professional Award is Ms. Kirsten Drummond. We presented Ms. Drummond with a framed certificate at that time. Come on up here, come on up here, you're an awesome lady. Ms. Drummond will also be recognized at a Westerville Civitane Council Meeting on May 16th. I want to read just a short excerpt of the nomination letter about this person who was selected this year. This individual has developed personalized instructional materials and strategies to assist our teachers in their craft and overall professional development in the science of reading. Her calm demeanor and creativity has infused our staff with a positive outlook on instruction, no matter the challenges set before them. She truly has novel approach to helping students and collaborating with a variety of entities to meet students' needs. In addition to her flexibility and creativity, she has served as a reliable resource and go-to person to problem solve and provide assistance on a variety of items well beyond curriculum and instruction. There were many, 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 I must say, more words of commendation in her nomination letter. She's an outstanding educator, and we feel proud to acknowledge that. So let's hear another round of applause for her. Well, we'd like to thank Ms. Drummond, and we'd also like to thank Ms. Glass for all her help in this process, and thanks to everyone who took the time to submit nominations. We look forward to seeing you all again next year. Our next recognitions this evening are for the National Merit finalist, and I'd like to call up Ms. Ann Baldwin.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Ms. Marshall. High school students who meet published program entry and participation requirements enter the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, the PSAT NMSQT, as juniors. In early September, more than 16,000 students, representing less than 1% of the nation's high schools graduating seniors, qualify as semifinalists in each annual National Merit Program. So these students are pretty special. To be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, semifinalists must advance to finalist standing in the competition by meeting high academic standards, among other requirements provided to each finalist. In February of this year, semifinalists who met those requirements notify they've advanced to finalist standing and receive certificates of merit. We're excited to recognize those high school students today. I'm going to ask each high school principal team to come up and introduce their students. So first up is Westerville Central.
Going to make him come up here and stay with me the whole time? All right. Well, it's our pleasure to recognize two of our Warhawk leaders as National Merit finalists, Rohan Malwalker and Isabella Williams. Rohan and Izzy exemplify the blueprint of a Warhawk. They model relentless pursuit to grow and get better each day, the belief that we're better together, and a commitment to own their actions, attitudes, and words to ensure they leave Central in a better place than they found it. First, I'd like to speak about Rohan. Rohan has earned a 5.07 weighted GPA. Rohan is a member of our men's tennis team, Boo Radley Club, and enjoys playing the piano. He's still undecided on college, but plans to study math and data analytics. Congratulations, Rohan. Next, we have Izzy Williams, who just finished her last theater performance of her career this weekend, and it was very well done. Izzy earned a 4.77 weighted GPA. She's a member of our Collar Guard Theater, Spanish Club, and National Honor Society. Izzy also spends time volunteering as a library aide and with the ICAN organization. She plans to attend Ohio University, where she will study to be a Spanish teacher, and hopefully come back to Westerville and teach. So congratulations, Izzy. Now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kurt Yancey, Principal of Westerville North.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Yes, you are. Hello, everyone. President Davidson, Superintendent Kellogg, Treasurer Marshall, members of the board. My name is Kurt Yancey, and I am the Principal of Westerville North High School. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present our 2023 National Merit finalist, Ms. Caroline Coe. Caroline's a wonderful student, athlete, and leader at Westerville North. She represents and has embodied all of the qualities of a Westerville North Warrior. Over the past four years, Caroline has excelled in the classroom while taking rigorous honors and AP classes. Currently, she holds a career cumulative weighted GPA of 4.8 and is ranked third in her class. Not only does she shine in the classroom, but she runs cross-country and track for Westerville North. She's a member of our National Honor Society chapter, a part of the Thespian Society, and was honorable mention for the Voice of Democracy essay contest. In fact, this evening Caroline is missing practice for our upcoming musical so she could be here with us. Caroline has decided to attend the Ohio State University to study genetics and zoology as a member of the honors program. She has an amazing, amazing future and is leaving a tremendous legacy at Westerville North. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Caroline Coe. Congratulations, Caroline, and that was my pleasure to introduce Mr. Mike Henze, Principal of Westerville South High School.
Thank you, Mr. Yancey. Unfortunately, Westerville South students could not be with us today. One is working at a really cool science-related job, and the other is rehearsing for South's musical, and I guess made the opposite choice of our other student. I'm going to let them know that when we see each other tomorrow. So Peter Stoikos is our first student. He is active in many extracurricular activities. As I said earlier, Will wanted us to announce Westerville South musical is this weekend curtains. It should be a great time. He doesn't know where he's going to be attending quite yet. It will be for musical theater, and we're still waiting on some financials and auditions. Peter was recently named a finalist for the Capital Marquee Awards for Excellence in Theater in the state of Ohio. Our other student is David Stuckey, who is already very busy taking all but one course at the PSEO post-secondary option level, but when he's slacking, he still takes AP Literature at Westerville South. He's going to major in something physics or engineering related at a school still to be determined. We are proud of both students as they are part of our academic varsity, and they've been wonderful additions to Westerville South. We will miss them. Regretfully, they can't be here, so join me in recognizing Westerville South's Merit
Congratulations once again to all of our Merit finalists. Our next recognition this evening is for our Future City winners, and so I'll call up Ms. Ann Baldwin once again.
Good evening again. I have the pleasure of introducing you to Tina Bardwell and Linda Amici, who are two advisors for amazing middle school students that are going to be changing the world. So I'm going to have them share a little bit more about Future City and the honor these students have earned.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kellogg, and President Davidson, and the board. We first just want to applaud these students for their remarkable hard work and their willingness to stretch as they worked tirelessly to become agents of change this past year. They really are learning to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. We've been, Mrs. Bardwell and I have been so impressed with their work ethic and their ability to critically think, to problem solve, to communicate, to innovate new ideas, to make this world a better place. Their continued compassion to support the Mashuru community, even after the Future City competition is over, will continue, it's actually really heartwarming. And it's our hope that their work will inspire and continue to inspire others, not just at Genoa Middle School, but in the Westerville community and then beyond. So we'd like to introduce them to you.
So if you could come up when I call your name, Paige Veligle.
Paige has been so passionate about the effect the lack of water has on education of the girls in the community that she has joined an additional group to continue to focus on that work. Her team describes her as a supportive teammate who collaborated well, a great presenter despite originally not wanting to present. We think that's resilient and brave of you. Paige always focused on what would be best educationally for the community, and just wants the absolute best for the community. They noted that her spirit and that she was always able to stay positive even during challenging parts. A passionate powerhouse.
Maya was the team leader, self-appointed. But seriously, Maya did pull things together when things were not quite finished. She was the polisher. We asked the team to describe Maya, and they reflected this.
That she was always willing to take on more work to help the team. She carried the team with presenting and writing the essays and the scripts, that she embraced challenges with a smile, that she was uplifting and a very hard worker, and this is an understatement. Maya is the glue that holds us all together. Her dedication, ability to follow through, drive for excellence, grace for others, and care is truly remarkable.
Colin Fowler. Colin was the go-to man to get things done, our compass. Many times, the team was stuck on what the next steps would be, and Colin would point us in the right direction, our next innovation. His teammates appreciated that he kept them fed by bringing the snacks, and they also described him as clever, has lots of amazing ideas, insightful, and a good crafter, very dedicated to completing the model, and also provided this team with so many snacks.
And Caleb Tran. Caleb is the inventor of the KD sensor to take data on the main symptoms for deadly diseases of the area and provide immediate output on whether or not a doctor visit was imperative. Look out for this upcoming inventor. You will see him again. His peers and I enjoyed his sense of humor and appreciate his planning skills throughout the preparation time for the competition. They also said.
That Caleb always has the best jokes, as well as providing excellent medical insights on the new ideas. He's skilled at idea generation, a good planner, honest, dedicated, thoughtful, and authentic. Caleb cares deeply for others and for the future. I'm grateful to know him. He's someone I feel I can count on.
The other essential members of this team were Cameron Shadley, Andrew Tran, and Andrew Gould. They were not able to make this evening because they continue to push the edge of involvement in our community and various activities as athletics and academia.
Tina Bardwell and I are honored to have the opportunity to support this work empowering learners to be the change that the world needs. Thank you so much.
And one more time, want to, as our next recognition is for our State Division One Coach of the Year, and if Ms. Ann Baldwin would come one more time.
Thank you again. I have the pleasure of asking, actually, Athletic Director at Westerville North, Wes Elefants, to come up and introduce to you Coach Trustlee, our State Division One Coach
All right, good evening. President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board, and Ms. Marshall, thank you for having us here this evening to honor Coach Trustlee. Organizations and teams are only as strong as the culture set within that team, and an organization or team's culture must be set, defined, and modeled by the leader at the top. In the boys' basketball program at Westerville North, Coach Shan Trustlee has done an outstanding job of setting a culture that empowers his players and assistants and gives them room to make mistakes and grow as leaders. He would be the first to quickly deflect any honor such as this one tonight to each member of that team and his staff. Post-game after each win, Shan even huddles everyone in the locker room and collectively has the team chant, "The team, the team, the team." Shan also dances, so maybe he will provide some of those as he gets honored tonight. Shan led this year's boys' basketball team to a 22-3 overall record and his second OCC championship as the boys' basketball coach at North. He is well-deserving of the honor of State Coach of the Year, but it is the culture that he's established within his program that is his greatest accomplishment. Each year amongst the thousands of high school sports teams across the state of Ohio, the Ohio High School Athletic Association has the opportunity to nominate one of those thousands of teams for the National Federation of High School Spirit of Sport Award. This nomination goes to a high school team and coach that displays off-the-court or field excellence in their community. For this school year, the one high school team in Ohio honored with this nomination was the Westerville North Boys Basketball Team and Coach Shan Trustlee. Westerville North alum and 2009 graduate Keegan Hale, a Warrior basketball player himself, is now in his early 30s with a wife and two young children as he continues his battle with ALS. To honor Keegan's fight, Coach Trustlee's staff and players held a youth camp in December, as well as a staff versus student basketball game this past March to raise close to $2,000 for Keegan's family. For this, Shan and his program were nominated for the Spirit of Sport Award by the OHSAA. While our team's on-court success helped earn Shan this very well-deserved State Coach of the Year honor, it is the culture he's established in his program that, to me, is much more impressive. I'm proud to introduce the podium, one of my closest friends, and the Ohio Boys Basketball
We just want to congratulate all of this evening's honorees once again, and at this time, we will pause, and for all of our award recipients and honorees out in the lobby area, Ms. Boss will be there to capture pictures of everyone. So thank you all for being here, and congratulations once again.
like to welcome Scott Reeves and several others. Gertie Glass and Adam Flugie, welcome.
Hey, good job!
I didn't know who was going to join you.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, and members of the board. Tonight, myself and our soon-to-be Executive Director of Specialized Learning Programs, Mrs. Gertie Glass, and our upcoming Director of Special Education, Mr. Adam Flugie, and we're excited to share with you the work that has been completed and the work that is ongoing by our talented and committed special education staff. And by our staff, I mean all of them. I mean our administrators, I mean our teachers, I mean our aides, and the work that they're doing to ensure that our students with disabilities and their families have an exceptional educational experience here in Westerville City Schools. Now, if you recall, last school year, Westerville City Schools, we contracted with Gibson Consulting Group to conduct a very thorough and very comprehensive Group to conduct a very thorough and very comprehensive review of our district's special education programs and the services that we provide to our students. And the reason we did that is very simple. As an organization, we are always striving to be better. And by being better, that means we elevate the services that we provide to our students and to our families. Sometimes that means celebrating the good work that we do, sometimes that means taking a very, very hard look at our practices and having the courage to do what we need to do to be better. As a department as complex educationally, socially, and legally as the Special Education Department, we wanted outside experts to come in and go through our processes and advise us on what we are doing well. And in the final report, they found 10 commendations of things that we are doing very, very well. And they identified places where we can enhance our service to our students, and they gave us 19 recommendations to consider on how we can improve or be more efficient in our practices. And although we have now completed seven of them, by a lot of hard work from some of the folks behind me, we still have a lot of work to do and a very long road ahead to get to where we want to be as an organization. This review, I'm not even going forward, I'm sorry. This review occurred across an 11-month period, and they looked at our data, they reviewed key documents, they surveyed the staff, and they just didn't pull a couple of people to get their thoughts. They reviewed everybody, administrators, teachers, aides. In fact, over 800 members of our staff participated and shared their experience to Gibson. They pulled some IEPs, they made some observations. In fact, they took nine of our schools and did classroom observations in 43 different classrooms. They looked at our assessments. They looked at the manner with which we provide services to our students. They reviewed our compliance with state and federal programs and regulations and laws. They looked at our professional development programs. They examined our consistency across our buildings about our processes and the services that we provide, and most importantly, they reviewed our parent relations. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Gertie Glass, who will share our response and the work that has been done with the Gibson report.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Good evening again. So after we received the Gibson report, together we created a core team in collaboration with WEA. Mrs. Davidson also participated, and also the executive team. We had both Cheryl Relford and also Anne Baldwin, along with a couple of the coordinators, to ensure that we were able to look at all of the commendations and recommendations in order for us to move forward. So we are proud of the work from this department in supporting our students, families, and staff, and took this as a great opportunity to reflect on the work as well as the area that we need to continue to grow upon. So it was wonderful to see the many commendations, 10 as a matter of fact, and I'll summarize some of them. So they fill that staff collaboration and consistency use of data to make best decisions for students in special education, the district percentage of students with disability in more inclusive settings. They also talk about the district percentage of stu-- no, I'm sorry, I did this one really. District commitment to improving students' social and emotional wealth, facilitation of transition for students with disabilities, and conflict prevention and dispute resolution practices. So, in response to the review, we created the core team to look at the findings and recommendation. So we grouped them into six different areas in order for us to really, really work on what we need to improve on and things that were going so well. So, the very first one that we did, we developed a plan for professional development. By that, what we did, after soliciting feedback from a sped department, we have developed a comprehensive district-wide PD plan to implement meaningful opportunities that meet their needs for the 23, 20 school year and beyond. Number two, develop a comprehensive library of curriculum resources. Our department has compiled and organized border-proof curriculum and instructional resources within a metrics for each reference in assessing specifically to instructional topics of reading, writing, and math. This is in conjunction with our shared resources that have been specifically developed by our instructional cultures for special education. Our department conducts ongoing exploration of different resources that support instruction and intervention. Number three, increase the educational outcome for students on IEP. The department is currently developing a plan to most effectively and efficiently analyze all data to promote student success. Special education is also a current team member of a district committee in collaboration with the ESC to focus on implementing MTSS within the district. Number four, evaluate and revise the curriculum of services for students on IEP. We are continuously looking at school-wide data to best support special education programming in various and individualized models to support all students. Number five, maintain a high level of special education compliance by upholding state and federal requirements. We have been extensively supporting compliance by creating a sped manual with policies and procedures that provide guidance to staff in order to uphold both federal and state mandates. We continue to provide multiple PD opportunities for staff to fully understand how to uphold their compliance responsibilities as a special education professional. And the last one is we establish the LRE Advisory Committee. Together with WEA, we are in process of establishing a least restrictive environment in order to analyze the staff workload. So now I will pass it to Mr. Flugy, who is going to talk about the recommendation at the district level.
Good evening. So along with the recommendations that directly impacted the Special Education Department, there were several recommendations that we approached at more of the district level that encompasses all students, not just students in special education. So we just wanted to take a quick moment to discuss two of those recommendations, and the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning is currently working on through these two recommendations. The first recommendation was the multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS, and the initiative behind that. As we know, MTSS is those evidence-based strategies that reach every child, and we are very proud of the work that's already started this year with this process. We've teamed with the ESC to strengthen this process so we can better support all students. Another recommendation that we are proud to announce is the exploration of a student management system. The student management system exploration is going to allow us to have real-time access and analysis of all student data across multiple platforms. So these are two more recommendations that we are currently working on that will impact all students in Westerville City Schools. So what have we already accomplished? As you've heard, we've been hard at work all year, and so we did want to take a moment to acknowledge the accomplishments that have been put forth in front of us this year. One accomplishment is we've solidified the protocol for complying IEPs, really including but not limiting to the settings such as team taught versus general education, and how we can really better understand supporting students across multiple settings. We've reframed and refined special education classes formerly referred to multiple disabilities and intensive autism, so we redefine these classes to be more inclusive and individually support students who access this level of programming. And a couple other accomplishments that we have already completed this year is we have now reviewed and updated all special education-related job descriptions. And lastly, the reorganization of personnel at various levels to provide a better oversight and accountability for specialized learning programs. And we would like to thank the board for approving this reorganization, as you have allowed us to better support the students and the specialized learning programs. So I want to thank each and every one of you for that. And lastly, I'm going to invite Ms. Glass back up here just to summarize everything.
So in conclusion, we worked with the Gibson. They came and they manipulated everything that we have going on in the district. They gave us some good recommendations, as well as some good commendations. So we're excited of the work. And I must also acknowledge my team, who was sitting here behind me. It was a lot of work that they put into this, and it was 11 months of meeting on a weekly basis and a lot of work. I even asked Dr. Kellogg to give me a personal secretary, but that didn't happen. But anyway, once again, this is all of the questions that we had. If we have any questions, we'll gladly take them right now. Thank you for everything you guys do.
Who has questions?
Thank you so much, and thanks for-- I know this is a long process, right, to go through and really work through this, so thank you for doing that. I have, I should get my notes in front of me and my readers so I can actually read them real quick. So I'm just curious, you know, when you talk about a plan for professional development, right, what are some of the pieces there that we're really looking to enhance on the PD side?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. So every year, we have certain mandatory meetings that we have to have, right, because the law changes, and we want to make sure that our teachers are well aware of that. But one thing we realized this year through the Gibson review, as we are providing PD, we have some staff members that are so far ahead, and we have some of them that also just need to have the PD tailored to them. So I can invite Jill and Jennifer up here. So we did a survey, and other folks really realized what it is that we need to not only help our teachers, but also the aides and also the principals, so as they sit in meetings, they can truly be part of a group to make sure that they can really be able to understand the work that we have to do and be able to help our families and students.
Okay, thank you. So it's--
Did you have anything? Are you good? Okay. I did a good job. They did the survey.
So we're looking at PD for multiple different groups of staff.
Absolutely.
Right? And thinking about how the pieces really fit together in a comprehensive way.
Correct. And tailoring it to what they need. So if I am skilled in an area and I need to improve in another one, we are going to make sure that I get what I need for myself, and other staff members get what they need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. I just had one other, I'll just have to find it. So you talked about increasing educational outcomes for IEP students, and you're kind of drilling down, and that's like, kind of big, right? So I know you touched on a couple of things, but can you just summarize for us again, like, how is that work proceeding? That's a very big job.
It is.
Right? So just walk us through some of the steps and what you see as some of the maybe early wins that we might think are on the horizon there?
Sure. So part of the things that we have been doing all along is especially focusing on the reading and math for students, because we realize this is where the big buck is, especially at the elementary level. So we are also tailoring the PD that Kirsten Jolm, who was here, give to our students and other, to our teachers, in order for them to really be able to understand the science of reading. Also, she is pushing more in the classroom to also model for teachers so they can see what is done. We are also struggling a lot with behaviors, so we are also going to tailor the training for behaviors based on what our teachers are asking us for. We are providing, like with the Westerville U, is that out already? Like PD for like, you know, pretty much not just a one-and-done, but just like making sure that, you know, we are following through along for like the PD if it was in reading, for example. We don't just say it's done in the beginning, but we just like, you know, continue on a monthly basis or quarterly basis to make sure our students and our teachers are able to get benefit from those PDs.
Thank you. I ask about those, I feel like those two fit really tightly together, right? The ongoing PD and the performance of students on IEP. So thank you for drilling down into that. I'm really interested to see how that progresses. Thanks.
Yes, definitely. Other questions? Okay. Thank you.
So I do--
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The multi-tiered system of supports initiative, give us an example. Because really, what you guys are talking about is so up here, it's really hard. Like, in that room, I felt like I understood a lot more what was going on, but this is so high-level. I want you to drill down a little bit. Let's talk about some of the things that we were talking about in there.
So within the core team that we created, and part of the fighting is that we realize that tier one, for not just academics, but also for behaviors as well, just they go in hand-in-hand, right? So our students cannot sit in a classroom and automatically feel like we need to give them tier three, which is, you know, a lot of people think it's special ed, but it's really not. So the MTSS is just a framework to really drill down on tier one instruction, and when students are not getting the tier one instructions, and also academic, it's like we need to look at the student a different way. What interventions can we put in place in the regular ed classroom so students can really learn and learn to behave and learn to read, right? So when we realize that tier one is not working, then that's when we turn into tier two. What is tier two? Tier two is more instruction at the student level. So we look at both behaviors, again, whatever it is that we are looking for for the student. And when we realize your tier two is not working, which is sometimes only 15% of our students, we look at tier three. We put more intensive, sometimes it's one-on-one, sometimes it's two-on-one, interventions in place for the students before we are referring students to special education, because we know that the more interventions that they are able to receive in tier one and tier two and tier three, the better it is for them. So, and we are working with the ESC. We have two gentlemen that come here on a monthly basis to help us define what MTSS should look like in Westerville City Schools. We are actually ahead of the state, because the state does not even have MTSS defined. So we at least have that defined, and we are working together in the teaching and learning really, really hard to ensure that when we are able just to present all of that to our students, to our teachers, that our students can benefit from that.
Okay. And did anything come out of this audit that surprised you or your team?
Well, we had some good recommendations. I appreciate the fact that they know that we work really hard. I appreciate the fact that they know that we are stewards of, you know, what we do in this district. Some things did not really surprise us, but some things like, oh, wow, this was going on, you know, maybe we need to be more involved in the day-to-day work to make sure that we are really seeing it. So all in all, I think also because we just had the audit from ODE two years prior to that, so most of them just kind of like, you know, reassure us what we were doing is correct and what we knew, you know, we could have worked on it. And COVID happened, so we kind of like took a step back, but that was really good for us to finally be able to see again. We have some good things going on in the district.
Oh, absolutely. So I know this is just the first step, and you've already done a lot of work. When will you come back and update us again?
Well, whenever my boss-- Yes, me too. We are hoping to do a lot of the work by the end of the year, and this is going to be ongoing.
Absolutely.
I would love to be able to come back here, maybe in the fall, especially after we offer some PD, just to see how staff is receiving it, and we'll just make sure we let you know again, because this is a work that we are going to continue to do, because we have a lot of things that we have not even tackled yet, so hopefully next fall.
Okay, that sounds great. We appreciate all of it. And Kristi has a quick question.
I do, I'm sorry, thank you. So for people at home that might not understand what tier one, tier two, tier three is, could you maybe like give an example of what it is?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Tier one, so when you have like your pyramid, you look at tier one, that's like the whole student, right, body. So you need to make sure that the instruction that your students are receiving, or 80% of them should be able to read to reach that 80%. So teachers should be teaching to the whole class body. However, 80% should be able to receive all of the instruction and also behaving, right? So when that's not happening, that's when you look at your tier two. Tier two is when the teacher, again, is able to provide more interventions based on the 15% of the students that were not able to get tier one, right? And then the top layer is your 5% of students that still need a truly, truly intensive, more on top of the second. So it's not like you get tier one or tier three. Is you get tier one, you get tier two, tier two is still not working, and you get extra tier three, in order for you to really, really be able to get what is being presented to you. And then at that time, that's when we say, okay, after all of that, what do we do? And that's when you maybe refer the student to SSC, and that's when, you know, more people are putting eyes on the student and just say exactly what, we need to look at this this way, we need to do this this way, to ensure that you are, we are really giving our students anything and everything that they need so they could succeed. And if that doesn't work, then that's when we say, okay, maybe it is special ed that the student needs, in order for him to meet, you know, the requirements that put in front of them.
And as these things happen, the parents are--
Absolutely.
--kept in the loop, too.
Absolutely.
That's really great, thank you. I love that we're not leaving any children behind and working really hard.
Yes. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Is that all? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay, moving on, 5.1. Approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April 10, 2023, as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments here? Hearing done?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
5.2, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday-- 5.2, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April 17, 2023, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Up next on our agenda, 6.1, public comments, and I would like to welcome Mary Lou Hiddle. Which I didn't even know that was you out there. Hello, welcome.
First of all, thank you for having me. Thank for, thank you for everything you guys do for the students in Westerville. My question, or my comment is more of a question for the audit, and I'm sure you're going to be surprised that it's about dyslexia. As you all know, the legislation passed recently, and we have an Ohio Dyslexia Guidebook. So, my question is, can we get an, an update on where things are with the implementation of those recommendations? Is that possible to get some information about that tonight, or will that be forthcoming?
So, when questions are asked from the podium, we don't answer them right now, but we will have Gertie have a chat with you at the end, or you can sit over there now. But we're typically not equipped, or we probably need to go back and talk to the experts. So, I'm sure they can give you that information, absolutely.
Okay.
But I don't think it's here tonight.
Good. And I, I also did just want to say a huge thank you for taking the time to go through. I can't even imagine, I know it's blueberries and apples and pears and oranges that you guys have to serve, and you do a great job. So, thank you for that. And I look forward to connecting with you so we can formulate a plan. I'd like, I think it would be fantastic if the district could present a public explanation of how they're going to implement the Dyslexia Guidebook recommendations so that the dyslexia community knows what we can expect in Westerville.
Sure.
So, thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to financials, 7.1. May I have a motion to approve, oh, I'm sorry, a resolution to approve the purchases in accordance to ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, would you like to talk to us about that?
Yes, thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So, this is an annul purchase order where we have an invoice that's dated after or before a purchase order date. So, this was for the ESCO that we have, we're doing some work related to a grant through. And the late purchase order was just because of the timing of when the grant allocation actually came through, so.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
7.2, may I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for February and March 2023? And the financial report lists all funds ending in February and March of 2023 respectively.
So moved.
Any?
Second. I'll take the second.
Great.
Yeah?
Thank you. So, to report on February, month ending February 28, 2023. In the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of 163.5 million, year-to-date expenditures of 125.9 million, and we ended with an unencumbered general fund balance of 189.3 million. Year-to-date expenditure, or I'm sorry, for all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of 221.5 million and year-to-date expenditures of 214.3 million. And we ended with an unencumbered fund balance of all funds with 245.6 million. And then moving on to March, for our general fund, we, ending March 31, 2023, we had year-to-date receipts of 192.7 million, year-to-date expenditures of 142.3 million, and we ended with an unencumbered fund balance of 202.5 million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of 258.3 million, year-to-date expenditures of 237.8 million, and we ended with an unencumbered fund balance for all funds of 246.5 million. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Is everyone okay if I take this as one?
Could we call out 8.11 for a separate vote?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie, we're going to do this in two votes. So, we're moving on to the personnel consent agenda. We're going to start with 8.1 through 8.10. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. I'd like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. The items in tonight's brief agenda represent regular action items with regards to personnel. This evening, we are asking the board to consider and approve the usual array of resignations and change of assignments along with supplemental employment. That includes the district's summer intervention and summer school programs. We're also welcoming four classified employees and three licensed professionals to our district. We have two retirements this evening. Please join me in congratulating Teresa Kitts-Miller, retiring from Food Services at Westerville South with 10 years of service, and Stephen Sullivan, retiring from Transportation as a bus driver with 22 years of service.
Wow.
So, we'd like to wish them both a very long, enjoyable retirement after so many years of dedicated service to our students and our community. Any questions related to that?
Hearing none?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Moving on to personnel consent agenda, 8.11, administrative guidelines, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Of special interest, 8.11. We are asking the board for its consideration of the administrative wage and benefits guidelines. With approval, will be effective July 1 of 2023 for the next two years.
I'm the one that asked for this to be called out for a special vote, so I should explain why I did that. I didn't want to cast a vote on the other components of the consent calendar that I don't mean. When I want to cast a particular vote on this part of the consent calendar, this is about the wage and benefit guidelines for a, an entire class of employees, the licensed and classified administrators, so that, that class. And I agree that it's time for those to be updated. It definitely is time when this latest set was put into play. It was with the understanding that within a few years, we'd be coming back and revising again, just as we do with each of our employee groups, as we look at wages and benefits and other operating considerations. But I have really struggled with this. And in the end, I find that I am not in favor of a review of the wage and benefit guidelines that during the time of the review, and while we are determining where we will be going with certain very large areas of the wage and benefit guidelines, that we actually are setting up a deleterious impact on this entire class of employees during that time of reconsideration and redevelopment. So, because we are in approving this, setting up a negative impact that carries forward across the trajectory of administrator careers, I find that I can't support that. So, I wanted to be sure to have the opportunity to vote in favor of all of those wonderful people, although I'm tempted to always vote against resignations and retirements. But I wanted to split it out for that reason, so that you understood where I'm coming from and my concerns about the wage and benefit guidelines.
So, I want to make a couple of comments here. I want to give a little bit of history as I remember it. These administrative guidelines were put in place, I think, eight years ago by a committee, and it had two board members on it at that time. And the idea was to, and it was a great idea from Dr. Kellogg, to have performance-based compensation. And one of the reasons we did that is because our, our administrators were not paid equitably as other area districts. And so, we value our administrators. And the goal was to get them so they could be competitive, and so we could keep them, because we want you. And so, we've done that, and we feel good about that. And the idea is to put a pause on that, just to put a pause. We're going to go through the, you know, hiring a new superintendent. We're going to put together a committee this summer just to start it. This time, there was not a committee, which I think is really important to hear from all stakeholders. I have been told that the administrators have been explained this and, and get it, and they're okay with it. So, just a little background, stay tuned, there's going to be more to come.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
No.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, moving on to old business. Is it okay if I take this as one? Okay, may I have a motion for 9.1 through 9.7?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, suggestions here? Hearing none?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, 10.1, first reading for policy 2271, College Credit Plus program. And we're going to welcome Matt Meisner.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall, and members of the board. I bring to you tonight an update to policy 2271, our College Credit Plus policy. Just a minor update with a large implication. In our new policy, we are recommending that children of military families that have to withdraw from College Credit Plus programming due to their parents' stationing orders being changed, that they would be allowed to continue in an online format with College Credit Plus if it's possible, or to withdraw without academic or financial penalty due to those orders. So, that's a real quick and easy little policy update. And I will tell you, there is some legislation going through the Ohio State House right now, so I'll probably be back to you in not too short time with some more updates. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. 10.2, first policy reading of 6325, procurement of federal grants and funds, and that's Ms. Marshall.
Yes, thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So, we are looking at the procurement of federal grants and funds policy. So, this is an update suggested by Neola, and mostly it's just grammatical error updates. But there is just one change to clarify about when the Davis Bacon prevailing wage is as required by the federal legislation. So, I think it kind of clarifies that. And with, this is in line with the U.S. Department of Education and their guidelines.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Moving on to 11.1, donations, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we are just so greatly appreciative to each and every donation. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
11.2, out-of-state and overnight field trips, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And welcoming in Baldwin.
All right, good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. I just have one trip for your consideration this evening, and this is for students at all three high schools to attend an international trip with the title Health Science in Great Britain. It will take place in June, so students won't miss any school. And this is part of our Western Worldwide programming through EF tours. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have a question. I know that they offer a scholarship opportunity. Do any of the scholarships cover the whole price for maybe students that are of lesser means?
I will have to find out exactly what the scholarship covers, and I can follow up with you. I know that the teachers do work with students who may have a hard time affording the trip to find ways to, to supplement that. But I will find out more and follow up with an email this week.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great to hear that they do that.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
11.3, approval of expulsion appeal, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any more public comments this evening, which takes us to board comments. Would anyone like to make a comment?
I'll go first. Congratulations to all the awardees and to the retired, those that are retiring. Thank you for all their service. I'm just going to talk about one bill tonight. I think there are so many. But House Bill 33, which is our state operating budget bill, it was introduced by Representative Jay Edwards. He's a Republican from Nelsonville, is a bit of a mixed bag of bad and good. As it pertains to education, the bill, well, there's the income tax cut. It combines two of the bottom tax brackets and lowers the lowest rate to 2.75%, which will result in a 148 million loss in fiscal year '24 and $46 million loss in fiscal year '25, of which would be split between revenue for local governments and public libraries. The Fair School Funding Plan got a bit of a nice win. Hopefully, it stays. Updates the Fair Schools Funding Formula with fiscal year 2022 inputs. This would increase the estimated fiscal year 2024 allocation by 497.1 million to 8.05 billion and the estimated fiscal year 2025 allocation by 607.3 million to 800 and, I'm sorry, 8.27 billion. It provides funding for a comprehensive study to determine the needs of economically disadvantaged students, the most effective services for meeting those needs, and the cost to provide those services. Some transportation items, it requires a Board of Education to provide each pupil in grades K through 8 substantially the same level of transportation service route and schedule convenience, and pickup and drop-off times relative to the pupils' school start and end times, regardless of whether the pupil attends a school operated by the Board of Education or a non-public or community school. It creates a pupil transportation pilot program whereby an ESC could provide transportation to non-public students in lieu of the homeschool and extends the FY, or the fiscal year 2022 to, and 2023 School Bus Purchase Fund until the end of fiscal year 2025. For Ed Choice vouchers, it increases school voucher eligibility to 450% below the federal poverty level, bringing the total estimated amount available for all Ed Choice vouchers to 780.8 million in fiscal year 2024 and 849.9 million in fiscal year 2025. It will have informal hearings before the Senate Education Committee Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week. Tomorrow, they have invited the Lottery and Racing Commissions to testify. It's interesting. On Wednesday, they have asked the school for the blind and school for the deaf, the Commission on Service and Voluntarism, and the Facilities Construction Commission to testify. And then on Thursday, they will, they have asked the Department of Education to testify. The bill will be passed by July 1 of this year. If you're concerned about portions of this budget for fiscal year 2024 and 2025, please contact your state senator and state representative. And if you need to know how to do that, just Google Ohio General Assembly. You'll be able to enter your address and find them. But it is a very long bill, so if you want to fall asleep, you can also read it at night.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it for this evening. So, 14.1, the board will- So, 14.1, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, May 8, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing employment and compensation of a public employee?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And with that, we're going to go into executive session. You may wait, I'm not sure how long it'll be here, and then we'll be back in adjournment, but it's up to you.
We are back from executive session and may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes, and with that we adjourn.